Welcome this evening, welcome board members, welcome community members. This is our April voting meeting, and so we're offered the place to fly.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, welcome this evening, but I just want to make two announcements for the community and the board. For the board, I want to remind you that on April 29th, there is the PSBA Advocacy Day in Harrisburg. This is an opportunity to send a message about the public importance of public education or legislative issues in Harrisburg. Districts from all over the state send representatives there. It's an event that I've gone to in the past, and maybe some of you have as well. I think it's well over about time. We try to set up opportunities to meet with our local representatives and hear, I think, important information from PSBA, and a lot of our representatives are very responsive on those dates, so I hope some of you can join me on April 29th for that event. Also want to make sure people are aware of, board members are aware of the April 30th Annual Convention of First County School Directors. This will be at the Redding Area Community College, it will feature DA John Adams and Dr. Evan Mahalik, who will be the General Health and Development of Possibility Program Manager for the county. And that's always a great event. I think we try to align as many folks as we can. They seem like they have a competition in school districts to get as many disciplines as Hildenburg got a year. They seem to get, so I think you administrators should actually...
We're looking for administrators this year.
So that's Tuesday, April 30th, starts at 5:30 with a tour and reception, dinner at 6:30, and then the program starts at 7:30. Finally, I just want to make an announcement too for the board and the community. We do have a community forum scheduled for Tuesday, April 23rd, starts at 7 o'clock. It'll be at the Wrighton School, and we'll be featuring presentations on personalized learning, safety and security, there'll be a math overview, and obviously opportunities for members of the community to make comments to the board and ask board members questions and receive information about what's happening in the district. At this time, we'll accept any other comments, anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on a matter of which you can, if you could just announce your name and come to the podium, turn on the microphone on if it's not on, and disclose your name and your address.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is John Parsone, or what is it, parent Parsone. We are the parents of Elijah Parsone, our former residence via workforce, seventh, seventh driving, Exeter. The reason that we are here, we would like to discuss a matter with you guys. We are parents, as I mentioned, for our son Elijah. We've been residents for the Exeter Township for about 15 years. We were blessed to have our son, who has special needs, and he is currently on a 504 plan with the Exeter School District and with Wrighton School. We paid our debts in support for about 15 years until the end of this year. It happened that we are moved to another area. We just purchased a house not long time ago. We went the right way to inform the school of the situation that we are no longer with the Exeter area as we move to the Daniel Boone area, which is not that far. Felt that it is the moral things and the right things to do, not the other way that other people unfortunately choose to. And in understanding, and in understanding that the boards will understand the situation, understand the Elijah circumstances, and accepting that Elijah will remain in the school until the end of the school term, which obviously a couple of weeks from now, but we were told that Elijah has to leave the school within a week and has to move on to the other school. We are asking to do what is the best for the child to remain in the school until the end of the school term for those next couple of weeks, not to mention that Elijah is in the fifth grade to move to the other school. He has to go to elementary school, and after that he has to go to the middle school because they don't set up the way how the Exeter school. So he has to move to two different schools, set up the 504 plan for him every day in the school. Obviously, when we moved to the Wrighton, it took a couple of times, a couple meetings, and going back and forth, how to do the best thing for Elijah and fit his needs for the Wrighton school, which it takes quite some time to get that set up for him. We know it may take some longer time for the Daniel Boone until we get everything situated ready for him, which obviously we feel it is not going to be the best for Elijah's situation to move right away in Daniel Boone school at this moment. We are so many as parents trying to do what the best for our child, and we're trying to express our concern to everyone here to understand where we are standing in that. We did not choose to handicap children. We blessed with that child. We need to do whatever it takes to support that child without causing any distractions for what he's been already going through, a lot of multiple surgeries. To that child, we are not asking to do either any illegal things. Obviously, we would like to go by the law, we do the right things. So I'd rather obey the law and do what is moral than obey the law and do what's not moral and what's right for the child. So I really want all of you to look into this, we're not asking for too much, but by the end, we're not at the beginning of the school year, and hopefully you understand the situation that going to another school is going to require a lot of arrangement that we don't see that it's going to be happening in the right time and quickly for Elijah to be ready for the new school. Thank you.
I do understand that an email that we submitted to Dr. Phillips was reviewed by all the board members. I also do understand that there are some parts in the Pennsylvania school law where it is allowable for school board to make certain decisions for pupils who are non-residents or become a non-resident during the last period of the school term. As my husband mentioned, we did pay taxes, we are definitely paying our fair share into the school district, and we only can say good things about the school district and the process. That's all the things that you guys have done over the last six years, we just feel like we were welcomed and were nicely admitted to the school district, and everything was possible, and we worked as a team, and now we feel like we are being kicked out. As the last email said, to us, Elijah will not be permitted to attend Wrighton after the date of Friday, April 19th. How can we accomplish chanting for a child with special needs in a week that it's Easter? Even if there is an extension to give us permissible time to be able to have maintenance team, lower hooks, put soap dispensers, when our child goes to another school, he has to be able to go to the restroom, he has to be able to appropriately wash his hands, and all the ADA requirements in most school districts, as you know, are, you know, they are ADA compliant, but ADA compliant doesn't necessarily cover everything for a child with dwarfism. We are talking about a child who is going into sixth grade that is not even 41 inches tall. There is a whole host of things that we would like to transition him with, physically, mentally, and do the right thing. I understand and I know a lot about, you know, the way how everything works. I know you hired someone to investigate people for $60 an hour, you know, to maybe find 10 people of $11,000 a year, which is $100,000 to cover something else in your budget. But we are not that kind of people. We are people who came forward, we are people who are honest and upfront, and kindly asked consideration for a good transition for the child, not for us as parents. If our child didn't, did not have any of the special needs that he has, we would not be here tonight and stand in front of you and ask for your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question? Was your child the one that was honored at the last school board meeting?
Yes, and actually, thank you for that. We have been supporters of the Exeter School District. The Redding Eagle did go and did a walk through. When Elijah went to Lorraine, we asked the Redding Eagle to join us to show how good the Exeter School District is with participating, with making sure the child is welcome and everything is set for him to start his school district. We cannot say anything bad, and we can rave about it. The article is still online. Little boy makes big stats. The school district was highlighted. Our son is very well respected. He has no trouble. He always does the right thing. He was recognized statewide for an art project where your school district was also positively highlighted statewide. I don't think it's a lot to ask to also feel the same going out as we came in instead of telling us, "Your son cannot be on the doorstep on Monday after Easter."
Thank you, thank you for sharing. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. The, to the max of consideration of your thoughts. Thank you. Any other comments from the community? Okay, we'll move on to our agenda to our presentation, and this is a presentation from Mr. Jamie Schlesinger and Mr. Peter Evans.
Jamie, we have somebody else who wants to do a comment.
I'm sorry?
There was somebody else in between, I thought I could stand up.
If you could just let us know your name and where you live.
My name is Joan Kohler, and I live on Plumsteri Avenue in Exeter Township. And I would like to address the board about school taxes and how it is a burden on Exeter residents. It takes two incomes to make ends meet in today's world, and if something happens to one income, it is a huge blow to financial health. Escrow property taxes, in many cases, doubles your mortgage payment, which is a huge expense. If one person loses a job and they can only pay their principal payment, the bank will not take just your principal payment without your escrow taxes. People who have their houses paid off still need to put aside money every month to pay their taxes, even though their bank debt is paid off. Obviously, in my opinion, it's very unfair. Two examples I can give you of Exeter residents, and the burden this causes on them in particular is one man who retired, and after being retired for six months, his wife got sick. Six months later, she passed away, and now with her social security check and pension, he had returned to work at the age of 67, just to pay his taxes. Also, another man, after being retired for 10 years, went back to work part-time at the age of 75, and he's still working at the age of 80. And from his mouth, he told me that is to pay his taxes. These are just two examples, and I'm sure there are many more. So I'm asking the school board to work within their budget and not increase school taxes because hardships can come to anyone at any time, and you should be aware. And Hunter, I want to thank you for making, last week I wasn't here, but you made the point about the windows in a 12-year-old school, and about replacing them, there was a bit put out, and you made a point to say that in a 12-year-old school, the windows could be fixed and not replaced, which I think that's being very fiscally responsible, and I thank you for that, and thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll come to the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Martin Carrato. I've been a lifelong resident of Exeter Township. I reside at 101 East 36th Street. I have two beautiful children, Frankie Carrato, who's a freshman, and Sydney, who's in the sixth grade, and my wife is Margaret Carrato. And the reason I'm here today is more of a comment and to bring visibility to something that occurred about a week ago in the boys' locker room. My son's phone was stolen out of his bag. Now, I am not, how do I say this, defending him, he could have taken different actions to secure his valuables in the locker room. Fifth-period strength and conditioning class, they stepped into the gym at that point, he had his bag on the bench, 15 minutes it sat there, another class came in of the sixth period, he comes back, phone missing. Should he have secured that? Absolutely, there's no doubt in my mind he should have done that. I just would like to bring visibility to, are there other items missing from that locker room? What steps may be taken to curtail that behavior? Because if we're not controlling it, let's not kid ourselves, if the kids don't know there's not cameras in the locker room, right? And some of that traffic is back and forth, and it could be somewhat pervasive. So I just want to bring visibility to the board's attention on that. I have spoken with Jason Dean at the high school on this matter. I have also filed a police report, just to make sure if this happens again, you know, we take the necessary precautions in order to make sure it doesn't. So, again, look, he's 15 years old, right? Could he have done things differently? Absolutely. But false sense of security, left the bag on the bench with the other bags, comes back, phone gone. Three-month-old phone. We're on the hook now for $850. What am I supposed to do about that? Right? He still needs a phone, and let's not kid ourselves too, all kids have phones these days, right? So he's got a bag that's porous, that you can see through, put it in the front pouch, comes back and it's gone. Not just about the phone, it's what's on the phone too. So I'm looking for a little bit sense of urgency here, if you will, as it comes to, not necessarily finding the phone. Who did it is important, I think, but also looking longer term, how do we curtail that behavior moving forward? So I'm not looking for an answer of how to do it right now, but as long as it's documented for the record, that's what I'm carrying.
I will speak to Mr. Campbell tomorrow morning about supervision in the locker.
Thank you, and I'm not blaming, I'm not the judge. You know what I mean? Let's just see what we can do here to correct, yeah, correct the measures.
I happen to see some posts associated with the theft, and it was clear to me from reading posts from other people that this was not the first time that something's been taken from the locker room in the high school. And so maybe in your investigation, Dr. Phillips, you could perhaps report back to the board the number of thefts that do occur in the high school, and what your rate is around solving those thefts, and if there are police reports that are generated, and how that works.
All right, we'll do that.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, the board, I appreciate it. Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, I think we can move on now, and so, you know, once again, I'll invite Mr. Schlesinger and women to the podium and discuss the 2014 refunding and 2019 refinancing. Thank you.
Hi, I think I almost should have a cognitive presentation. I was here a couple of months ago to talk about the refinancing opportunity related to the Series 2014 bonds. After a couple of months of discussion with administration, and then there was some just discussion about potential new money, we're here tonight to talk about a potential plan to finance up to $3.5 million of new money, as well as the refinancing of the Series 2014. In short, interest rates have dropped over the last few months. The economic availability is to refinance those bonds. You can see nearly half a million dollars that would take based on current market conditions to refinance that debt. The opportunity to add new money is also out there for the district. We're in the conversation, and I understand that you need approximately $3.5 million if not more. So for tonight, we have an advertised resolution to consider the refinancing as well as adding additional new money. The presentation itself prescribes what the market looks like, as well as what the potential debt service would be after refinancing occurs, as well as the addition of the borrowing. Overall, we do not need to save the debt by very much by adding an additional $3.5 million actually funding sure to your debt, it'll only go up one additional year. Your debt is actually quite short for most municipalities and state districts that have a debt going about 10 years, that's pretty sure. So that's good for the district and the taxpayers, which are going to less interest at the time. Based on the current interest rates, you are paying approximately 4% on your 2014 bonds. We expect this and the potential refinancing to be about 2.5%. That would reduce the debt service a significant amount of money. Outside of that, the new money would provide for additional funding for projects, and we expect that debt service payment to be approximately incrementally like $90,000 per year. Between those two are all numbers, but it's kind of a high level at this point. The refinancing itself works quite well, as I mentioned. These bonds are callable in May. You would actually make your last payments on day 15. Sell bonds probably by the end of this month or early next month, which will allow us to lock in interest rates and hopefully achieve these, these interest rates services as I described. Just going to ask you to turn to page four of the presentation. This is an assumption of what we think the new utilization schedule would look like based on current market rates. The refinancing itself would be about $1 million of principal refunds, an additional $3.5 million would allow us to have a new balance of about $11.5 million. The expected interest rates are shown in column four. They range between 1.91 to 2.73%. So kind of on average, the interest rate would be about 2.5%. As you can see, it's a really unique structure. That's because this is a combination of refinancing the existing debt and just adding some additional funds, so there's approximately half a million dollars a year of annual principal payments. It does bump up a little bit in '26 and '28. That's based on the original structures of the original debt. From your perspective, you want to keep your overall debt level or declining, so the district's outstanding debt will not change by much of the amount of refinancing in relation to the $90,000 a year. Any questions on this page?
So in '28, are we doing a blue thing, or like '26?
That's the structure of the original debt. When most districts issue bonds, specifically school districts, they need to let it wrap around debt service structures, and that's what was done back in 2014. So when you borrowed money back in the day, they layered in additional principal in those years when the other debt was disappearing, and by doing that, it provides for an overall level of debt service structure, but from your perspective, it pays back the debt. So it looks like the original, when you're looking at in the big picture, it's level of the law. I can point you to a previous page, which shows your existing debt, and that's on page two.
And Jamie, as I understand it, that allows us to be paying relatively close to what we were paying the year before and retire as much debt in shorter periods.
Exactly right. If you don't do anything, page two is what your annual payments are. So if you look on that page, on the bottom section, column 26, your annual payments are give or take about $729ish, $728 million a year, and that would disappear by 2028. So this new debt service, we're just taking up pieces related to portion of that debt, and we add some additional new money, about $3.5 million that would fall within the 20 and ensure you're literally 2029. So again, from your perspective, it looks about level in your budget. Again, that's quite common for school districts. I would say 90% of school districts that issue debt are using retrostruction, and given your final term being quite short, this is the most economical, and we wanted to, from your perspective, make some sense of paying for this situation.
So it's not an issue, the action that we take is not an issue related to our inability or our financial condition, it's really taking advantage of current market conditions, and then ends up also leading to maintaining your strength in your credit rating, which has a lot of other positive benefits as well.
Yeah, the district has a quite strong credit rating, so you're obviously taking advantage of the market to reduce your interest, it's kind of the financing side, in addition to your borrowing money for the capital needs of the district, obviously, you're using things that you do for capital, which not extend your debt by very much, so the district's credit rating shouldn't be looked on basically when you go to the credit rating process. That hasn't happened yet, that hasn't happened in the past. Any other questions of these types, structure? We can talk about timing, and Peter can talk about, anyone from Stevens, they could talk about the actual reservation itself. So where we fall right now, this is a parameters reservation, so we obviously are not going now for refinancing today. I think at my last meeting I attended, I mentioned that we would sell these bonds through a competitive process, and that's what the district's done in the last few transactions. We would put together an invitation date, which essentially gives any under regular bond purchaser in the country the ability to bid on your bonds for an auction process. That auction process would occur probably over the next few weeks. At that time, we would have your credit rate completed, which we would then put back to the credit rating agency, asking the local fiduciary financials to make sure that the credit looks good. Once we have that, it's called a preliminary official statement, which essentially gives the people that are going to purchase your bonds, information about the demographics, financials, the history, and what potential can the district have done. Once that occurs, they'll have an auction, and that auction is essentially a 15-minute auction, kind of like eBay, where the underwriters would go on that website and they would get on these bonds. This structure here, given the term, and has been quite short, and we have some new principal payments, I think will be very favorable in the auction platform. I had a very similar structure for Seward County about a month ago, and we received essentially AAA interest rates on a double A credit. I think this is a very similar type structure. I guarantee that, of course, but this is the type of structure that the primary would love, so I want to use market structure policy.
Would we be able to refinance again, I think it's five years down the line, or are we restricted from being?
You're going to be a little restricted here, so it's a great question. Last time I was here, if this was just a refinancing, we'd have an issue less than $10 million in account year, which may be bank qualified. Because this will be over $10 million, which would make it a non-bank qualified transaction, which would mean we would do this nonqualable, or a little, you know, slightly shorter call. There won't be much ability to refinance for savings building likely, so I'm kind of figuring that out right now. I thought we'd probably make a nonqualable, which will help other deputies finance, and that could be just better than just today. There's probably not going to be another purchase out of it to refinance the savings.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I know there's a ton of speakers here, and the high-level discussions, we can ask, we have an advertised resolution in hand, it gives us flexibility to borrow up to $14 million, I should point that out. We ask for a little bit more than is necessary, because when we sell the bonds, we don't actually know interest rates, the annual structure, so we'll look something similar to this. But if we get those proposed interest rates, I'm going to be able to adjust the principal payments in fashion, at least the standards of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. We have to do that in advance of the sale, which is what we're doing today. Anytime we've done these parameters resolutions, we've obviously come back better than what we're talking about here, but I suppose that would be the setup. The public that sees this has only got the bond $14 million, and it's certainly not happening here, more than likely to be somewhere around $11 or $12 million. Any other questions? Good timing, so, please report. I came in January, so by working through this, you're going to motivate to do that. Always good to have some questions.
Hi, Jamie, I'm Peter Evans, Attorney General Stevens, and I'll just briefly explain to you the process that we're going through tonight. Jamie already laid out the economics of the transaction. From a legal standpoint, the Pennsylvania National Department of Health and Public Health Act governs how the school district is permitted to refer debt. So there's a resolution for the board tonight, which will authorize issuance of bonds and the use of proceeds to complete the refunding of the 2014 bonds, and also with the action of new money projects. The resolution sets forth those parameters that Jamie mentioned, the maximum principal amount, the maximum interest rate, all done so that when it's time and the district's ready to go out into the competitive market to sell bonds, we'll have all the legal approvals necessary, and we're certainly in process with the state. we'll have all the legal approvals necessary for certainly a process with the state so that when you're ready to sell the bonds, you'll be in a position to do so. Resolution's fairly simple. It really follows the terms and conditions of the Debt Act. The key point of the resolution is the district's question of full pay credit and taxing power in support of the payment of the debt service. Same thing you've been doing for years, with respect to all the existing debt that's shown, highlighted in some of the long-term presentations. So if the district's ready to move forward, you can adopt the resolution as presented. And we'll move forward with getting the paperwork filed with the state, getting the approvals in place so that they're ready to sell.
Do you have one extra question? One of the things that's in the resolution on purchasing is there's a minimum savings threshold that we're going to establish. It needs a 2% savings threshold, so if the market ever change, we'd obviously use a threshold of, you know, you're often probably authorized at least a 2% savings minimum. So that's one of the things that keeps you from us refinancing this and not keeping the savings.
I'd just like to thank Mr. Slessner and Mr. Edelman, but I'd also like to thank Anne, as the district's director of finance. These issues can be very complicated and very complex. And I think that her deep experience as the director of finance for the district and the respect that she has in the industry is such that enables us to take these actions and maintain the credit rating of the school district. And I just want to appreciate those efforts.
I work for a lot of institutions, I'm the best.
Any questions about the debt? Can we talk about business functions? Any, just on our three projects that are slated, estimate the cost.
Thank you, gentlemen. I know we have a motion on each general later today, so if you're planning on sticking around for that. The general will move pretty quickly for our presentations this evening, so you're welcome to say if you'd like. Thank you. Before we move on to our building program reporting, we have Mrs. Jennifer Wolski, who is our pre-services manager and she's our number services. Welcome, Jen.
Hello, thank you for having me. So Dashboard was my first time. I've had some referees help me out a little bit, so appreciate that, because I'm here tonight. Not to bore you with a lot of the data, I just wanted to focus, let everybody know, especially about the eligibility of our district at the current time. Currently, we have over 1,000 students that are eligible for free breakfast and lunch. About 131 reduced students, which means breakfast they pay 30 cents and lunch they have $40 for their meal. The application is based on the 185% of the community levels. And that is set by the Department of Welfare and Health and Human Services. So that's where they qualify. So when the application is submitted to me, I go through a sales software that also helps check their income. Once a year, we do pull for verification, and that's 3% of all the applications that are handed in that we do have to ask for their actual income at that time. So it's a random selection that we do that is mandated by the national school lunch program as well. Most of our students are actually directly certified. And what that means is the Health and Human Services Department of Welfare sends me a monthly list of students that are qualified for SNAP, which might know what federal student stamps, TAN, which is national medical assistance. Those students can override the application process and they'll automatically have to go for free breakfast and lunch at that time. So currently in the district, we have 183 students that are qualified based on SNAP, for the food stamp benefit. We have six on TANF and 380 students on WTA. Just to give you an overall picture of where our district is trending, well, as a district workup to prior years with our free and reduced eligibility. As you can see, the student participation, as enrollment goes down, obviously, participation is also affected. You see that meal trends. But in some buildings where we have a higher free reduced students population, you'll see the meal trends start to go up a little bit as well. So it's kind of catch 22 with that as you look at the different buildings. And you can see, going across, two of the buildings are on the first page, and then the other, and switches them to other schools are on the next page. Our breakfast participation is starting to go up. We put a very high emphasis on breakfast promotions past year. We also have four breakfast grants. We have the No Kid Hungry Grant, and that is at a lot increase this year, Wrighton and at Lorraine. Jackson Mall was a lucky recipient of the governor's breakfast grant. So that income comes in monthly this year. They changed that grant for next year, which I just applied, so if you could receive it. Also, hang this, they changed the new that grant at Jackson Mall to go up some year. If we do receive that grant, that money will be uppaid different, all at one shot in August instead of monthly with each claim that I do. So, do you have any questions about the participation before I go off to this list? We have our revenue sources, obviously, our meals, and that's from paid and reduced monies coming in. Catering, we've increased, we do friendly foods like our à la carte sales. We also, Mrs. Klein did the after-school tutoring sessions, so I don't go in board with that and provided an after-school snack, which I was able to claim for some reimbursement. So if she plans on doing that in the future, that is another way that we can help feed some students in need for afternoon snacks. Our federal reimbursement obviously went up last year. This year, this information is only till the end of March, obviously. But our reimbursement's gone up a little bit more since we have more free reduced students that are planning expenses. We do participate in a food and supply bid, so every item that I do bring in is on a bid. We do have our commodity foods, and I do participate with the DOD program for our fruits and vegetables, through the Department of Defense as well. So that's a big cost savings there with our produce. The money's still running out, so it might have to pay a little bit more. But with our procurement review, which we're going to be up in maybe next year, everything has to be put out. I have to send out a produce bid every week to every produce vendor, some reply, some don't. But it is very time-consuming, but everything I do purchase, I must have at least three bids going forward. So I can't just go in the grocery store and run out of something. There is a process for everything I purchase. Repairs have gone up. Especially, it's just got a bill for our booster heater at the junior high just died, it's lasted 18 years, but it needs to be replaced. At the beginning of this year, we also had replaced condensing units at the junior high, Wrighton, and at Jackson Mall. So they've all seen their day. So we've been hit for the last two years with pretty expensive equipment repairs. Wages and benefits are on my chart. But as some of the physicians, some people retire full-time, I'm looking into, you know, part-time and just looking at better ways to make the budget come out. At least even with a positive.
You know, enrollment has gone down, so you've naturally maybe adjusted to your stopping, which has really helped, Stephen.
Yeah, we were still operating with the same amount of staff and same labor hours as we did back in 2014, 2015 earlier. So obviously, it just needs to be revamped with the meals per labor hour study, which we completed last year. Our service budget looks somewhat good for the end of this year, let's play nothing else breaks. And next year, I'm preparing the budget, and so far, I think I believe that we could possibly end in a profit for next year. And at this time, the payment actually has not come out yet from USDA, so at this time, I did these budgets without a knowing. And we have a great sense of mental reach, so going by that just with the current information. When we look at our fund balance, obviously, that's where our major purchases have come out of there and also to compensate for the wages and benefits every year. The data for 2017-18 isn't completed yet, they had it locked, and we just released it actually on Monday. So Elena and I will be working on that data, so I can update anybody for that. I just, I wrote down each building with some pickpicks, just to give you an idea of how many students are screened each building. Again, directly certified, that comes right from Department of Welfare, the list of students that are automatically free without filling out an application. Along that line, it's just, oh, and the profit for Jackson Mall, that's the only elementary school you're going to see a year-to-date profit is because we're not actually cooking in that building. We're cooking at a Watten, transporting, it's a kind of save on that. That just, that the different method, a Watten is designed as a, as a big production kitchen, and it just doesn't utilize that way. So it made sense that it was a little mile away to utilize all that equipment instead of dirtballing some equipment at Jackson Mall. On average, out of 149 students that are free at Jackson Mall, about 50 of them eat breakfast and about 117 eat lunch there that are free. So you'll see this trend as I just kind of pull those numbers out for your school. Obviously, my big concern is either there's a stigma that they're afraid to come and eat, even though they're not identified as they're known through the line, or just lack of the information to know that they can come out. We send some letters home, we call them, it's on the website, so just going to be focusing on promotion of the program going forward. Lorraine, again, 146 students are free, 126 are directly certified. On average, 35 of those students eat breakfast daily and 106 of them eat lunch. A Watten, 154 students are free, 136 directly certified. Again, on average, only 26 eat breakfast a day and 103 of them eat lunch daily. So again, just going to be pushing, especially for those elementary students, start those good eating habits early on, make sure that they have a good start, so they're not tired, they're not going to the nurse. We have kids afraid starting, so we want to make sure that they have a really, you know, nice start to the day. I know we provide snacks for PSSA as well, testing, so they will have a little bit something to get them through until that lunch time. For Wrighton, 170 are qualified for free, 148 are directly certified. On average, 30 eat breakfast a day and 125 eat lunch. A little bit better. We do at Wrighton have the breakfast carts set up at both where the students go into their different hallways. And that has increased their breakfast participation by 33%. So you can see, we are getting there, again, it's a work in progress. Junior High, 153 students are free, 129 directly certified. On average, only 26 eat breakfast and 110 lunch. Senior High, 265 students are free, 220 directly certified. On average, 90, which is not bad, eat breakfast daily and 145 eat lunch. Senior High's lunch will be affected by BCT, see if some of the students leave us. So they, even though they qualify under money numbers, they get the credit for it, only over there. So that does change a little bit for us. I'm busy here, like I said, we had four grants this year. I also applied for the Penn State Pro Wellness Campaign at the senior high and received a three-star rating on that. So something else I can apply again. We also did a survey this year, I had a dietetic intern, so we did that. It went out via Parent Link, and it had a great feedback, it went on from grades four through 12. Only 241 people responded, but I'll just work on that in the winter of next year. We also...
You mean from a survey perspective, 241 responses, based on the number you sent out, is actually really good. I mean, if you look at people who do surveys for, you know, that's like a regular participation, percentage participation.
Yeah.
It just, market research, people will tell you that it is.
We're trying to get for next year. Actually, I was planning something a little different, furniture restart, small, like a food show, possibly, so we could see, get her into that way. I did apply for a field-to-play 60 grant, and we did win our flag football pitch. So the picture there is of our, our backfield team. They draw on to field-to-play 60 and do plays, and they can win points and get so far to get touchdowns and things like that. And Mrs. Dora has been very helpful, I know she's coming out right now, but she has been helping me and the students during their equal lock-in. Kind of helping them field plays, so that's, we got a special lock-in. And just on the last one, I've been very busy this year. We did have our administrative review. They started in October, and we got the final letter on Monday sent to us. So it's a lot of paperwork, and they do come out, they spend a few days with us and watch the review. So we did well overall, everything was organized. And they just wanted, one of my past years, to have a little bit more change and a little confused on what the virtual was. So we prepared that, and in fact, the physical actually was needed. Just the coming up, every year, our staff has to have six hours of training, just like general, you know, cafeteria staff, a lot more than that. So going forward, we're going to partner up with the school districts coming through here, and save on money and do a group of training sessions. So we're going to be heading over to most of the school districts in August for training. And just a little plug for the ladies, Lunch Lady Hero Day is May 3rd. There's a comic book about lunch lady, their superheroes, kind of like that. Do you have any questions?
I was just wondering about, you gave the numbers of students who received free lunch and the ones who actually ate it. And I know all schools had a discrepancy, and you kind of explained about what might happen in high school. But what do you think the students, are they happy, not eating, especially at the...
At breakfast, most parents do have them eat breakfast at home. Because I'll have some of the good moms call, because they have the school cafe app and they can look and see, and they're like, oh, you know, Johnny ate breakfast at home, I don't want him to eat breakfast at school. And then I try to explain, I'm like, oh, well, you know, you don't have to worry about it, you know, it's free, it's not going to cost you anything, you know.
You can get the understanding where the breakfast, but then they're in school all day, what are they, eat pretty? day, what are they, eat pretty?
I think some of them are packing. I don't know, we, I have a lot of options on the menu. So I'm not sure, I try to hit, you know, like there's vegetarian options there, you can modify for any diet. We have special diets where I offer gluten, I have gluten-free menus. So we try to accommodate just about anybody who has a dietary allergy or any issue. To be honest, I don't, I don't know at this point in time without calling up everybody a parent. And, and part of the issue is you can't single them out. So I can't just send a letter to them, say, hey, come on down. It has to be a general variation.
But you don't think, you don't think, do you remember like not eating or, you know, or saying they're not eating?
Well, then that's where I look to the, the building principals or even the cafeteria aides that are out there, they will send the students up to us if they notice that they're not eating. So I, it's hard to pinpoint, parents have their own reason some ways. Elementary kids are, are like what their neighbor has, so sometimes they're kind of on a kick for a few days and it's, it's a challenge. So that's why going forward is different, we have getting feedback of what they really want and even reaching out to parents to see what, what are the boundaries? Why, or don't you want, not that they don't want their child to eat there, but why, why is it selected one day and not the other? Especially when the benefit is there for them.
I just wanna say that I think that you do a very good job with lots of selections. My kids are very picky eaters. If you had pancakes every day, they would probably get it, but other than that, they're not interested. But they do like breakfast. They go to Watten Creek and I don't know if that's a thing, but they think it's cool to have breakfast. So I would go with that one there. My kids will promote it for you.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, well, move on to the agenda. Just want to, as we go through the agenda, just want to remind our board members that we have set the agenda up for a consent agenda, which was several items at one time under a single motion. We had an opportunity in a workshop meeting previously to have a discussion on the interview of these items. So, you know, there's, there is the option, however, if any board member did, they'd like to agree from, you know, the consent agenda for specific votes, just signal that to the, to the board members who facilitate that process. So just sort of admit, recommend the board directors approve the March meeting, youth march meetings, March 12th, March 19th. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The treasurer's report, it's recommended that the board of school directors approve the treasurer's report for March 2019 as well as payment requests for March, and that's defined in the agenda. Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For policies, we have two sets of policies for food receiving, one's in the second reading, which means the final approval for the first eight policies and the last policies, nine through 17, would represent first reading. Would anyone, would anyone prefer to have an item approved from the consent agenda? So it's recommended that the board of school... I'm sorry.
Joe, you're already second.
Taking some of my reels.
Joe, maybe he's second. Okay, you get this.
Okay.
I second it.
All right, I'm gonna read the motion first, all right? Recommended board directors approve policies of 1 through 17. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Business functions, Mr. Gill.
I'm gonna have to replace Mr. Gill, separate his items for the...
Separate each one.
I keep up the test, in case I... Cause they're very, they're varied items, so it was asked.
Okay, recommended the board of school directors approve. Number one, the agreement of understanding with communities and schools of Pennsylvania for teachers in the parks, agreements for the period of May 1, 2019 and November 30, 2019, a rate of $25,225.
Any discussion?
I will be voting no on this because I view this quite frankly as a subsidy to the families who pay half. The entire school, school district, tax paying unit pays for subsidies for X number of families. I believe they should be paying the full boat and the taxpayers should be off the hook.
Any further discussion?
I have, yes.
Go ahead.
I was reading an article that's called My Attention about the TIPS for giving $5,000, offering $5,000 to Y missing school district to start up a TIPS program?
I read that.
Okay, so I was just wondering, but that's from our TIPS program giving their $5,000?
Yes, there's only one TIPS program.
See, it said the TIPS for...
It's not for, it's not for the Exeter TIPS program.
This what?
It's not, it's not, this is not Exeter's TIPS program. It's TIPS is a separate entity. We contract for that service. So TIPS is not an Exeter program. It runs separate. It's a separate entity from the school district. So the school district does not, our school district did not, is not allocating $5,000 to Y missing anywhere. Doesn't come from us.
I'm gonna disagree with that because the money's all gonna go into one pop. And that money is gonna go to one of the richest school districts in the county to pay for their TIPS program. So now, Exeter residents don't just get to pay for the 250 or 300 kids here, they get to pay for Y missing kids as well. At what point does it end?
I don't, I don't, I don't know whether I agree with that. I think that TIPS gets their money from different sources. I mean, they've got federal sources and grants that they get money from, other contributions. So I believe that any money that we put into it is subsidizing those school districts anyway. This is, we're paying for services directly associated with the services that we get for our students.
So then using that methodology, people could in essence, if they don't want their money to go, to kill ground people in wars and wars. Because the money all gets thrown into one pop, is what you're saying.
I, I think you could make that argument for any contracted service. Any, any contract, this is a contract. This is, we have a, we are contemplating a contract through this action. And, you know, I, I think you could say, you could make the same argument for any contractor in, in any action that may take outside of, 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 because we, we contract for services far beyond this, you know, or our educational placements outside of the school district. You know, we don't regulate what those other entities do with the money to buy a service. They decide how they're gonna spend money for that program.
But that service is mandated and some programs not.
Those services are optional for us to purchase. It's a marketplace service.
But it is in lieu of us having a program to handle that.
Right. And this isn't in lieu of us operating our own program.
But the education for that child that you taught it to go to a specialty school is mandated by the state that we must educate that kid.
That's true.
Is it mandated by Pennsylvania that we have a summer program?
So any further discussion?
Based on your argument, it's also not mandated. We do full-day kindergarten, we also do that, Jerry, so, so we have our kindergarten programs.
We're not talking about kindergarten.
It's not, it's not required.
I think we could operate our own summer program. We just, we, we wouldn't be able to do it as efficiently as this particular organization could for the school.
So being faced with a $2.8 million deficit this year, paying $25,225 for this program, which is not mandated, instead of telling the parents, you can pay the full $180 for your kid, instead we're putting my 82-year-old neighbor on the hook for their kid to go to TIPS, which is not mandated by the state.
I think you'd also argue that that $25,000 investment in the education of our students enhances their skills, typically those students that may have some needs, that go beyond what we can accommodate in a regular education program. So by enhancing skills over the summer, avoiding that summer slide, I think we in many respects could, could very well be saving ourselves money by investment in the education workforce.
So I, since you just mentioned that, I had, I know I had asked and I maybe others have asked to see some data on, you know, how it is helping our students? I haven't seen that.
We had, I think we asked some discussions that was it the communicating?
Business function.
Or was it the business function, maybe where we actually talked about some of the aspects of how the work is operated this year, some of the limitations in terms of what data that we would be able to access. They don't collect pre-and post-program participation data.
I mean, we could say that it's effective and I'm not doubting that it is, but it's, but we think that if we were to prove that it is, that they would have some sort of, you know, measurement to show. And if you do that all the, you know, the schools would...
In theory, we could do the same thing. I mean, we could take our own pre-and post tests, you know, each year, at the end of year testing, beginning of year testing, and it just segregate the, the students who participated in TIPS and be able to determine how they did relative to students who did not participate. We really wanted to evaluate ourselves. But they don't, they don't provide us with the evaluation data.
So is that something we, we could do with the, you know, is that something we could do with the testing that's, where we separate out the students who are in the program? Or would you have a...
The star assessments would be one metric that we could use. We could, we could look at the star reading and star math assessment, the final one in the second quarter of this school year. And then once we see which students from Exeter attend TIPS, we could then look at their stars, you know, score in the fall of the following school year. And we'd be able to look at that data and see based on that metric if students that were at benchmark at the end of their third grade year, if they're still at benchmark at the beginning of fourth, or if they increase, yes, that, you know, we, we would be able to do that with stars as one metric. You know, I, I, you know, I would say we probably want to look at multiple different data points. Stars probably the easiest one that comes to mind, but there, there may be others as well that could be explored.
Right, I would like, I'd like to see that because I, I'm in favor of anything that's gonna help our, our students to, you know, grow and to achieve. But I'd like to see that this type of program is actually working. We could get that.
Yeah, there's, there's no reason why we couldn't get that.
Any further discussion?
I would just like to say that rather than us thinking of TIPS as an expense, and I said this before, is that I actually believe that the Exeter School District missed an opportunity a couple of years ago to actually leverage the entrepreneurialship of the TIPS program. And Jerry talks about entrepreneurs and the entrepreneurial skills of people and their ability to do things better, you know, than a public entity could. So here we have somebody who was actually a public education teacher who had a great idea, has been raised by a number of organizations. And I think if anything, Exeter School District ought to look at, you know, we sit here and we talk about managing expenses, but we never talk about the ability to generate revenue. And I think there's an opportunity here if we did this the right way and we thought outside the box and we realized that just because we've never done it before, doesn't mean we can't do it. Is to find a way to leverage this program, franchise it and turn it into a revenue generator for the school district.
That would require Mr. Hathaway, you know, we're part of his business, huh?
We asked Mr. Hathaway several years ago to basically give away control of this business by bringing in SISPA to handle this for him because we had some concerns about issues related to risk management. He did everything that the school district asked at the time. He's won state and national awards. We were gonna sit here and have a discussion tonight about cutting costs, but we never talk about what we do to try to generate revenue. I'm not saying that would be easy to do, but it's something that the school district never talks about, but there might be opportunities here to do that. And I would just try to give an opposing view, which is to say, why didn't we take this entrepreneurial, this teacher, that entrepreneurial idea and try to turn it into something that would have a positive benefit to the school district, generate revenue in such a way, no different than how a Dunkin' Donuts or McDonald's franchises created. So I mean, again, if it hasn't been done before, it seems impossible to actually do something and it would take some, you know, thought as to how we would do that. But I think, you know, I don't know if that's still an option, but I think that's another way to look at the program. I mean, here's a kid, not a kid anymore, probably, but he had an entrepreneurial idea and leveraged it into something good that has been recognized throughout the country. And we could have been an early investor in that, the same way that people were early investors in Apple and other, you know, organizations that had a great idea, but most people couldn't envision it at the time.
Mr. Dysh, would that be a permissible investment under the rules if the state had a downpour?
I guess so. I can...
Any further discussion?
I just wanna say that I wholeheartedly and happily support TIPS. And honestly, I'm a little disappointed in that everyone feels, doesn't feel that way. Not only are the kids going to this program and learning and that might be data that you can get and you can see, but you can't see the data of the kids that if they learn in that program, they'll be sitting in front of the TV or they will be socialized with other people. Or they're meeting kids that go to another school, then now they're gonna go to Wrighton then. Or they are meeting a teacher that may be their teacher next year that they wouldn't have otherwise known. I think there's a lot more going on here than just learning. Looking at the figure here, number one, we've talked about this before, this is one way to look at it, but the other way, from what I understand, is that $25,000 is a fee that we're paying because, like Mr. Japina said, we asked Mr. Hathaway to go out and do this. $15,000 of that is for payroll liability services. $5,000 is what Matt Hathaway has to be paid because we need him to do this. He was not paid anything before this. And then he has to pay two site supervisors $25,000. That's the reason...
$2,500.
Yeah, sorry, $2,500. But that's the reason why we have this $25,000 fee. You could look at it that way, which is the accurate way because we didn't have that before, or you could look at it as 300 students. But either way, we have this relationship because this is what the board asked of him prior to myself being on. And I think that Matt Hathaway does a great job. I think the kids benefit from it and I don't think that we could find a program nearly as good as this for the cost that we pay and we should be thankful instead of the way they're acting.
I'm gonna reiterate that this is not mandated by the state and our taxpayers should not be doing that. If people want their kids to go to TIPS, they should be paying the full $180. Mr. Hathaway should have his business to run. I support any entrepreneur in a legal business. If he asks me for help somehow, I would find a way to help him. I just don't think the tax money should go to provide a corporation for something that is not mandated by the state.
Code question. Without objection. No reclamation of all the question? All in favor, call in a question?
Aye.
Okay, all, so we have a motion on the table, we have a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? Motion carries.
Item two, recommended the board of school directors approve the following business function item. We're giving the 2018 school real estate tax, flat tax on 175 Wayman Road, ready 19606 for Scott Downs, the amount of $4,280.23. Mr. Downs disabled military exemption from school real estate taxes between August 2017 and applies to the property, which was purchased in June 2017.
Motion in second and discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number three, it's recommended the board of school directors establish a minimum present value debt service savings to the school district after payment of all costs of issuance relating to the refunding demo obligation bonds, series 2004...
of issuance relating to refunding general obligation bonds, Series 2014 of at least 3%. Did you say 2% Jane?
I did.
Okay, so it's supposed to be 2%.
It's supposed to be 2%. If you guys want to read it.
It's really not going to be 2%.
2%, okay. Do we have to amend the motion?
We just read it the way that you have it.
Series 2014 of at least 2%. Estimated savings, $436,000. $435,000 for $500.
Motion in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carriers.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approve a parameters resolution to issue debt, Series 2019, an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $14 million, not to exceed. Fund will provide for the following refunding of the school district's outstanding general obligation bond, Series 2014, to the improvements of existing facilities in the school district, and three, paying the costs and expenses of the issuance of the debt obligation. PFM and Stevens, we will present the parameters.
Motion in second, any discussion?
I just wanted to refer to my comments that I made at last week's meeting where I said that I wasn't in support of this in light of this functions meeting that we had with Ann and the budget picture that we're looking at. I relented, and I'm going to be voting in favor of this. I don't think that should change the mindset that we should have, that we want to borrow as little as possible, if at all, because I think that it burdens the board with paying costs on interest. But in terms of the difficult situation that we faced with this year, I just didn't see any other way that was feasible, so I will be voting in support of this.
As it mixed last week, I think the way we should go is inferior to this because we're looking at investing in long-term items that are going to have appreciation or a useful life that will exceed its terms of the law. I think it's the way we should be going instead of tapping into our resources value and keeping our finances intact.
I don't mean to interrupt, I just wanted to clarify that the vote tonight for this resolution should be a vote of approval. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, who wants to stand?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Japina?
Aye.
Dr. Habberler?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Dr. Flenden?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Aye.
Mrs. Stratten?
It's your motion carriers.
Number five, I think, John. Recommend the Board of School Directors approve budget transfers in the amount of
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carriers. For some committee, Mr. Japina.
Yes, it is recommended, and I'm going to actually read our retirements. It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel retirements. Colin Stock, high school math teacher, retiring effective at the end of the 2018 school year. Thank you for your service. Is that right? Thank you. It was also recommended that the Board of School Directors approve or ratifies the following resignations, hiring of support staff.
That's resignations, not support staff.
Resignations of certified, I'm sorry, resignations of support staff. I'm going to go through these one by one, let me just do that. So let's vote on those. We're going to vote on the first two.
Second.
Yeah.
Just get a motion. Or a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carriers.
Okay, it is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following appointments, administrative staff.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Akar, what have been your reasons with this class in New York? He gets his regards.
Any opposed? Motion carriers.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items, both certified staff and support staff and food service staff.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carriers.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approve or ratifies the following personnel items, extracurricular staff, Mr. Matt Ashcroft, senior high, has varsity boys basketball crew, at a salary of $7,162, effective for the 2018-2020 school year. Mr. Ashcroft is here this evening.
Can I get a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carriers.
Mr. Legat, do you want to introduce Mr. Ashcroft and his license that are here this evening?
Thank you. So with us tonight is Mr. Ashcroft, our new high school.
Coach Ashcroft. It was Coach Ashcroft.
Coach, sorry. Coach Ashcroft, our new high school wood basketball coach.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for having me. I just wanted to say a couple words. Wanted to first thank my wife, Becca, for all your support throughout the years. I know it's the late nights from October to March is not always easy, so I appreciate it. Wanted to thank Tom Legat, obviously, and the board as well for this wonderful opportunity. I'm really excited to get started, so thank you very much.
I don't know, I apologize, I don't know if this ring is how I decide to go to, but I have to go back to work if it's close to the stadium, so I have to call excuse.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items, extracurricular staff, Nicole Giffen, varsity softball coach, certificated substitutes, support substitutes, food service substitutes.
Second.
Can I have a certificated substitute be taken out for somebody that I'm not going to state?
Figure of state, can you identify?
At least totally.
So pull that one from the vote.
Okay, so we will, it's recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel from Nicole Ragiv, certificate substitutes, support substitutes, food service substitutes, but eliminating parties coping.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carriers.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approve or ratify the following personnel items, certificated substitutes, at least coping.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say.
One thing. Mike, I'm sorry for messing that up. I just saw Lisa's name on there, I just wanted to.
We're used to it here.
From Hunter. It was great until you started this discussion. You wait till the end of the night.
Any further discussion?
Call the question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One abstention.
One abstention. Motion carriers.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items, change of status support staff, Sarah High, Rainbow Reacher, and Anne P. Ryder.
Second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to say one thing, I just wanted to give a congratulations to Anne Ryder. She graduated with me from Exeter, and it's just really cool that she's coming home and working at the district. So I just wanted to say congratulations to Anne.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carriers.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following personnel items, and that would be the attached course request, the attached list of conferences, and the updated job description for instructional technology.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carriers. Student functions, Mrs. Stratten.
All right, I'm reporting on the balloon filters that are put with a 60 mile radius and a 107. And then it recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following student function items, I'm going to do 1 through 4 and 2, 5.
Good section. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carriers.
It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves item 5 under student functions.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
One abstention.
An abstention, one abstention. Motion carriers. Thank you, Mrs. Stratten. Okay, we're going to move on to committee reports. Athletic Committee, Mr. Adams.
Student functions, do we need to do 6 and 7? Did I miss that?
There is a 6 and 7.
Yeah, maybe I'm looking at it. Maybe it's the general. I have 1 through 4.
What is 6 and 7?
6, the senior high creative expression students for traveling. You did that? And Jackson won second grade students for traveling. She's a child.
That was in the report. That was in the report. Yeah, that's, we're one house. That's a report.
Right. Reading off the wrong.
It's all like, oh, you're right. It really is. The big block guy. Were you wearing glasses?
Can you hear what I, what I went through?
How would you all agree?
Mr. Adams, Athletic Committee.
Yes, I just want to report quick some results that our teams have been having so far this spring from Tom. And quick, I also wanted to recognize him and all the other members of faculty, staff, administration that worked on hosting the Special Olympics, I believe it was this past Friday. I don't know, do you have more? Yeah. So just a thank you on my behalf and from the Athletics Committee regarding that. And just a quick report, the girls' lacrosse team is 8-2, and number 2 in District 3 right now. Boys volleyball is undefeated, and they're number 2 in District 3. Boys lacrosse is 7-3. Baseball, boys baseball is 5-3. Boys tennis is 7-6. Girls track and field is 4-0. Softball is 7-1. And that's just a preview of some of the teams that are doing well this year. And I know that my brother was recently mentioned in the paper for his success at hurdles, and I know that the rest of the boys track team has been doing some really good work, and they're having some success this year, and hopefully some of the runners are going to move forward counties as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Stratten. Curriculum Committee.
Dr. McLean.
Okay, so I was at the meeting, Dr. where is Mr. McLean?
Sure. Got somebody to use the microphone?
Yes, I do. Time limited. Five seconds, start.
We had a curriculum committee meeting last Tuesday. First agenda item, we talked briefly, gave an update on where things stand with virtual programs, in particular the supervisor of innovation and personalized learning. We have a finalist. Dr. Phillips has been going back and forth with that individual. Hopefully that will be coming to some closure sooner than later. We also talked a little about the memorandum of understanding with the association, very close to finalizing that as well, we believe. Let's talk a little bit about kind of what our plans are moving forward. We are still on track to start with Virtual Academy next year at the high school using Edgenuity as a product. Then I'm going to go much more in-depth next Tuesday at the community forum on personalized learning, where things are with virtual programs. Talked a little bit about professional development. We're approaching the summer season in our Summer Flex PE catalog, where we offer a variety of options for teachers to be able to choose to fulfill that professional development. By completing those two days, that enables them on the Monday after Thanksgiving and the Friday before President's Day to not have to come into work on those days. And very excited to share with you that sitting down with Mary Ann today as we're working through the catalog, we have well over 100 offerings available to teachers and county. The catalogs still not completely yet, so our folks are going to have a lot of choices this summer to choose from in terms of XPE. And then we spent the remainder of the meeting, and really the bulk of it, Julie Klein, gave us a very thorough presentation on our literacy programming, an idea of some of the things we've been doing, but with a heavy focus on where we're going in terms of next steps, in terms of looking at our data, identifying those gaps, and making tweaks as necessary. So very good meeting, good questions, well attended. Any questions?
I think there were two other items from last week related to curriculum. One was the discussion from a member of the public around homework, and it was my understanding that we were looking into that as potential future discussion curriculum. That's on the radar screen. And then we had another member from the public last week who raised an issue around scores related to PSAs.
Block scheduling.
Block scheduling. And was just wondering if there was, I know we were going to look at some numbers, there's some metrics around that research.
That gentleman showed up here last week and spoke to the board. Mr. Campbell was gathering all that information, and will have that for the board.
Any other questions? Our report.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Dr. Williams. Just so this committee, Mr. Brady.
I'm going to break things into three pieces here, probably, unless anybody has followed that, I think 1 and 2 together, 3A when it comes to separate, and 3B when it comes to separate. Of course, we're going to recommend that the Board of School Directors authorize item number 1 and 2 under facilities committee being.
Jim, I think the discussion really, at least that we had last week revolves around 2, I don't know if you want to call it 2A.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I got you back this time.
It was resembling later, my feeble eyes at my advanced age, I'm just happy I can see things. I'm going to take 1 and 3 together, 2 on going to split. It's recommended the Board of School Directors authorizes district administration to approve item number 1 to number 3 as indicated facilities committee.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carriers.
It's recommended the Board of School Directors authorize district administration to rebid the 2018 capital project for the junior high school short plan item.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is recommended.
Over, any opposed? Motion carriers.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors authorizes district administration to rebid the 2019 capital project for the righted opable window replacement, federal repairs and replacement. I would commend the motion. We recommend that the Board of School Directors authorize district administration to rebid the 2019 capital project for the government repair replacement. And then as a second motion for the opable window replacement, so I'll split the motion.
Just, just letting you know, it's only a inquiry, we're reserving the privilege to second. Are we, is that okay, Anne? We don't have any problems with this? That we don't have any problems with?
Well, I think, I mean, I have a question, which is, so when you say rebid, are you just going out with the same bid? Or are you going out with a different bid?
Well, the item, the problem lies when we did the original bid, everything was grouped as one item. So for example, we had the junior high school alone with all the control problems we had by going to a cell provider, all of them were one, that's why we're going and breaking. But the other problem here is that with regards to the control units, they take us a different period of time to line up the materials and to get the whole top floor ready versus when we're looking at the, the chiller plant for the junior high school and right to windows. That's the thing, we could get back on the street and still get that worked on this summer. If it was approved by the board. So.
We just reprove the chiller plant.
Well, I'm saying, I was just giving an example of why this is all being broken out tonight versus where it used to be.
So the only one that we have to debate, another motion on or another bid, has to do with the Rifeston operable window replacements to gutter repair.
That's where we're stuck right now. Yes.
But you wanna break that?
I'd like to break it up because I have the feeling that we may have people who are okay with one of those, but not the other. So instead of canceling both potentially, or it would be better to, to look at it independently. I don't know what that does for us, or maybe the same. So it's still waiting for a second.
So, can you, can you reiterate the?
Okay, I am, I am going to, I'm gonna break the motion up right at the beginning if I may. Would you rescind your second?
Well, I didn't second.
Whatever second.
But I'll rescind my points before, uh, my, my part plane.
No, there's someone in your second one. Don't. Yes. Recommended board of school directors authorize district administration to rebid the two thousand nineteen capital project for Rifeston's gutter repair replacement.
Second.
So wait a second. This time off. So that's an eleven thousand dollar bill? Roughly. So we're rebidding the gutter repair, or we're voting on the gutter repair?
Yeah, so. The point of inquiry, would we have to, first of all, bid that? And second of all, if we do bid that, is that a, like, we guys have a problem with splitting it away from the window replacements here? So that was my point of inquiry in the first place. Cause I, I didn't wanna second it if we can't do that.
Well, my concern is everyone would, if a vote was in the majority to say we didn't want to do the windows, for example, then we wouldn't be able to go ahead with the gutters. So I do not wanna lose doing the gutter repair, which is a required, it has to be done, regardless of feelings on the either end. So therefore, that's my concern.
But I see Mr. DePina's, but you don't wanna rebid, you just wanna vote.
Is there a bid item right now to discuss without, I guess that's a question for Anne, is there?
It was packaged together.
Anne, can you?
Anne, sure.
We know.
For those who, they always, maybe this is, this is developed from K C B A, assuming project hours.
Uh, sorry.
I keep her saving, I said.
Sure. Uh, I think it'd be simpler if you took the gutter repair work off the table as a rebid because it, the anticipated value is below the bidding requirement threshold. So you don't technically have to bid that.
Let's not do that. So we're moving back. We're just gonna approve stuff.
We're just on the windows.
Well, we have to, we have to still vote to accept the first.
But you're gonna have to go out and get. Well, so before we do that, if there is a majority for the operable window replacement, wouldn't we wanna maintain the bid? So if the operable window replacement were to fail, then I think it would be in order for us to approve the administration to go out and do the gutter replacements. But that's only if the first one fails. Is that, is that a first?
No, I think from what I hear from Mr. DePina, he wants to go ahead and vote on getting the gutter done irregardless, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, what I'm saying is, first of all, if the gutter repair is a separate bid, it stands alone. And if we can vote on that, do we wanna vote on that without rebidding?
I think the concern is that it wouldn't be a bid at that point.
Because it was packaged with the other one.
It would be a bid if it's packaged with the other one, but if it's not packaged, it wouldn't be a bid.
That's what I'm saying. So that's my question. If the case mean any, though, is, can we not vote on the gutter repair separate from this? Or can we vote on that? And the bid that we got is, is a good bid, and we can vote on that bid.
That, that bid, as, uh, Mr. Brady said, was puzzled when a larger project, so we've already rejected. You can't pull that aside.
We haven't rejected yet. We're separating.
Well, we rejected it originally.
Yeah, we rejected. So we need to revisit it.
But it was a motion to give authorization to get pricing on the gutter work. Which is a small sample, it's not the entire school. And then the separate piece would be regarded.
Well, then, then did we also reject the windows? We rejected that.
Not voting on either. Not voted on.
Well, the, the initial, we did reject.
We rejected the initial bid, now we're trying to rebid those. Sorry, I don't.
I feel like I'm.
But the, the motion is probably has to reword to author, to authorize and to acquire three competitive prices on the gutter work. And then just select the lowest qualified bidder.
We even have to do that, so we have to, something a threshold of nineteen thousand or whatever?
Correct. I think what Hunter was saying to take action on. Window replacement first, and depending upon the outcome of the pack, that's go ahead, then you know authorize including the gutter work.
Fine.
And if that's no go, windows, do that authorize.
Why don't we do that? It seems less confusing. Here, right. Thank you, Mark. That's free, Mark, yes. Do you mind?
Thank you.
Recommended the board of school directors authorize district administration to rebid the two thousand nineteen capital project for the Rifeston operable window replacement gutter repair.
Do you need another second?
The first second we lost before bringing that back.
Motion in the second, any further discussion?
What exactly was the, what was the motion?
What's in there now? Replant the.
Replacing all the operable windows at Rifeston School alone with doing gutter repair or replacement at Rifeston School. As indicated in the first.
I just wanna say that I agree with Hunter, and I believe that, um.
Understood. Well, no, people here don't know anything.
I'll restate it.
Please do that.
Okay. Um, so the concern here was, is that at the very end of the day, we are getting lower on the capital available to do capital projects. When I mean capital, I mean money, not, yeah. And to me, this seems like a project that we can look to alternative methods to fulfill, uh, or, or to alleviate the concern surrounding the safety and the operability of the windows. And I think I'm gonna ask Rob and Anne to speak to this a little bit more. And you're, you're fine to disagree. I, I'm not gonna take it offensively. Um, we reviewed, uh, the tickets that were provided by Rob. Thank you for them, um, for the windows. And my overall concern is that, I believe, if, well, I think that there are alternative ways for us to handle this problem. Chiefly, that we either look at devices that will keep the windows open when they're open, something like a safe that gets put in the shaft or something along those lines, so they won't fall. Or we close them, and they are not going to be able to be opened. And the purpose for that is really to avoid the cost of about three hundred eighty thousand. Is that, is that right? Three hundred eighty thousand dollars when we have, I believe, a deficit of our capital funds for the next thirty years of about two point. Two million? Is that right? I'm, I'm putting you on the spot, I think it's over two million.
Correct, assuming all.
Yeah.
Just three, all those projects.
So on, on our current expectations, the assumptions that we're making now for the next thirty years were at a deficit of about two million dollars. This would bring us under that two million threshold. And I think that this is a good way that we can look at, to look at an alternative measure to save costs. I'm not opposed to alternative methods being permitted for the teachers to be able to open the windows. Uh, if we can figure out if there are devices that we can use that will prevent them from falling, like Dr. Freeze described, and I think one of the ticket orders had described. Cause I agree that that can be dangerous. I, I think that we're bringing a sledgehammer to a nailed problem. Um, and, and replacing all the windows at this cost, I think, would be a mistake when we're looking at the grander scale of all the projects that we have to complete and what we have to afford. I, Rob, I'm not sure if you wanna come speak to this at all. I, I, I understand that your recommendation is to replace them, so I, I think it'd be fair to hear you.
Yeah, I mean, uh, you know, I, I respect your opinion, and obviously, I'll do whatever the board demands or requests or directs me to. I think when you're talking about devices, you know, dowels holding up windows, I mean, I think that's just as dangerous. I think there's a lot of, uh, there's enough margin of error there where you are looking at a, a potential issue there. Telling, uh, I think you mentioned last week, telling the teachers to keep their windows closed. Uh, not sure how well that's gonna go over with the teachers. I mean, I know in my discussions with, uh, Principal Freeze, uh, Freeze over there. Uh, you know, they, they do like to have that option on a, a, a warm day. Maybe our, we're in a shoulder season, and we're technically still heating the building, but it's a warm enough out where it's gonna get a little hot. Or, you know, if we do have a mechanical failure, and the room's too cold or too warm or whatever. You know, they do like to have that option, or even like if it's just a beautiful day, be able to open up the windows. So, you know, I understand that it's not cheap. I don't know enough about the history, but from what my investigations, my discussion with the people that work here, uh, the windows that I've put in weren't of the highest quality. And, uh, uh, you know, it would be my recommendation to, to do the project, but I guess, uh, of course, as far as I'm gonna do.
So when I, uh, when I have a window that doesn't work at home, I don't replace all my windows.
You don't?
And my question really is, Rob, is have we, I mean, I heard, um, Dr. Freeze talk last week about a window that they had an issue with, and I wondered if anybody went through and actually checked all the windows to see those.
I did not check every single window, but I can tell you I went into, to a few classrooms, and it was a consistent issue with each of them. To give you an example, he, uh, the principal could not open the windows, but I could, cause I'm short. And much bigger and heavier. So, I wanna, I wanna appreciate, I'm gonna stay here. Stay.
How many tickets have you put in?
It's wiring though.
How many tickets have you sent for broken windows? Teacher's saying, my window doesn't open, or I cannot.
I have a report, uh, forwarded to the board, uh, twenty-seven since two thousand fourteen. There is a, a data gap there where we could lose some information, uh, including your name.
Twenty-seven, how many?
How many windows?
Ten.
There's probably over a hundred.
Now, those are, uh, tickets that went in through our system. Uh, that's not to say there were issues that were handled by the, the custodians over there. You know, just because they have travels, the teacher's gonna say, I can't close or open my window. Uh, the day was, it doesn't form, that doesn't get, get, uh, backed.
Can I just add, or ask a question? I think when I reviewed the tickets, a few of them were for the same window, were for the same room. And I know that there were several for the library. Is that, is that a fair representation?
Yeah.
I have a question.
Other than opening windows on days when you feel like you need the fresh air, is there any other values in having a window that should be open for any other use for that? Does that have any other function?
I know that the, the principal was concerned with, uh, possible heat and privacy degress. I don't know if I share that opinion, uh, because obviously, if you're on the second floor, it's not good. So, uh, we can get it. I, I believe because in the beginning stages, uh, the, the windows were gonna be replaced with non-operable windows. And that was, uh, we pushed back on and changed the operator, so.
I guess, I figure out, we're spending all this money just so we can open a window on a hot, on a nice day. Again, for sure.
Also, if you see that the heat system's still on, it doesn't have a switch, which how do we get that? How, isn't there a way to go into the building and change the?
Yeah, well, there's a shoulder season where it could be thirty degrees tomorrow and eighty degrees.
So the heat just goes off at eighty degrees?
If the building, if outside's temperature's below fifty-five degrees, which is often for nights, uh, the heating system.
Can you change those parameters? I don't know, I, I'm, I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure.
If you, based on a, based on a, a forecast that says, well, it's gonna be forty-three tonight, but eighty tomorrow. Can you change the parameters?
I believe that, I, I don't think that's a button click that might be a program.
So I guess why?
Oh, is there also a, a concern besides having trouble opening the windows, that they come down hard and fast?
The top stash will.
Right, because a couple, uh, two, two years ago, a teacher at this, at the school where I was working, that happened. Cause those windows were like that, and you had to really struggle to open them. And it came down and cut, uh, nearly amputated two of her fingers, like badly mangled them up. And, you know, so there is a, you know, a safety concern about, you know, that as well.
Was it those exact windows that we have it right? Well, like.
No, it was another school building, but the same thing, where you had to really like stand up on a ledge, push them, you know, you couldn't open them. And then they used, something that they used during, was like biology books and things, you know. But anyway, it came down in her hands and really mangled up two of her fingers that they thought they were gonna have to amputate.
So it appears we have two different things. A, we have the, the top shi, the top stash, which could come down, which we could immobilize. That would be. And that can be easily immobilized, like we can pin or nail or anything, or however the hospital likes. My concern is with the idea that Hunter had, anytime you rely on a human being to do something, instead of it automatically occurring, it will not happen. Because people just don't do things sometimes because they don't think they need to, until their fingers get mangled and all this stuff, they can't be killed. So, is there any type of device on the market which can spring in as a window gets opened? Some kind of device where you just, it, it's, it's held into the path, the pane. As the window opens, it flips into that open area. Possibly it steps, so as you go opening it up, it goes up. There are different levels.
Device that assists the window opening?
No, does not touch the window opening.
No, it's holding off as it goes up.
As it flips up, it, it, it flips in. Here goes one of my great pattern ideas again. So basically, it's a reactive device that's spring-loaded, built into the window framing. So as the window goes up, these levers go in and block the window from coming down that height. You can step it, if, say the window's two feet high, you have it stepped every six inches. And that way, someone wants to blow air, more air, totally open, you have that possibility of breaking. You don't rely on a human being to be able to screw it up or possibly hurt themselves. And it doesn't open, well, it doesn't open, and they call maintenance department, open a window. And it's not something that goes lying down. And it costs less than four hundred thousand dollars, possibly less than four hundred.
I would have to research that, I don't know.
Or you could do that. As there goes up.
Seventeen, seventeen. There we go, that was mine.
Seventeen.
So yeah. Seventeen generator.
I just see, uh, if that's something like that, we're gonna be able to do it.
Naturally, maybe that's why. You would think there's something like that on the market somewhere. Get the newer people experiencing the problem.
Can I just make another point?
You usually would anyway.
I just wanted to make it sound like you got sat in a machine.
Blank, yeah.
Ed, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, and maybe you can speak to this a little bit more. But I believe at the last meeting, you had said that generally, as a principle, when it comes to the windows, having them inoperable and, and not allowing them to be opened by any classroom makes it easier to stabilize the entire building in terms of the heating and cooling. I don't, I don't know if I heard me correctly. Thank you.
Wow.
Wow.
It's a, it's a relationship. That's correct, that's just an engineering fact. If you can have a closed environment, it's much easier to, uh, run it more efficiently. They can design smaller systems. I mean, your system's already scaled to account for all the windows being open at the same time, so you can see that benefit. But engineers always prefer that. time, so you can see that benefit, but engineers always prefer to have a closed system designed.
Could I ask another follow-up question unless somebody else wants to ask something?
Go ahead.
Okay. Do we have any way or device now to pretty much permanently close the window that could be removed in the event of an emergency without damaging the window? I don't know, Rob, if you could use that on any of the windows?
No, I know. I know of one window in the stairwell that was secured with screws because of the continuing problem of this front dash continuing to fall down and not being able to keep that standing. So, you know, any kind of sealing of those windows is not something that's easy and especially in emergency, high pressure, high stress.
Does that damage the windows so that you wouldn't be able? I don't know if that would really matter. Never mind. Go ahead.
Yeah, so it's a warranty.
It wasn't a warranty question, but I appreciate the answer.
Call the question.
We request the call to questions. One favor.
All right.
Okay. So, we're going to call the question and would you please, Mr. Brady, one more time, just repeat the motion if you can.
Thank you.
No, we already got through that.
Of course I have. It is recommended that Board of Supervisors authorizes this to the negotiations to rebid the 2019 power project to write to the Department of Windows and place an A about recovery protocol.
Again, I'm going to come back to my question, which is.
You've just called the question.
You know, but what are we rebidding? If you're saying rebid.
We're bidding the whole thing.
We're bidding that whole thing. But before we, that part of the question. But what I'm, what I'm trying to understand is, it seems there, sorry guys, I didn't mean to.
Chasing them out. Chasing them out.
But my question, but my question really is, is it seems that there might be a desire to replace those windows that seriously need to be replaced and not all the windows. And my concern is, are we bidding out all of the windows again because that was the original bid? Are we rebidding the original bid for all the windows or are we deciding that there are certain windows that should be replaced and we would like the bid to be on those windows that we want replaced?
I think we'd better to go through this motion, do what it's probably going to do, which is, of course, yes, and then we come back to that topic.
Okay.
Just so we can get through this, all right?
So, the motion and a second and we've concluded discussion. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
Now, I would just like to go back to your question is, I would, I would suggest that, Rob, if you could research what, which windows in the building are no longer serviceable and if you could get back to us with a quantifiable number and what you anticipate it costs to be for replacement of those, I think that would be a better way to approach this than a wholesale replacement. Or if you're able to get onto the market using, given this Google, and find some kind of device that can be used in a window cell, in a, in a type of school building environment that does not require human interaction or, and maybe that's another option.
Our twelve-year-old window's still available.
This is fourteen-year-old. Actually, it's fifteen because it is fourteen, it's fourteen years basically old. Well, no, we're going to get a holiday. Or you get something new that will fit into that space.
I'm sorry.
I mean, would you, would you think that would be a better approach than Hunter?
I was going to talk about something else.
Because I haven't gotten to my next item on my agenda, that's why I asked. Does anyone concur with that approach?
Can I draw two cents in?
Sure.
If we're talking about specific window replacements, those windows are not going to fashion anymore, so you're going to have to build a little two.
Who cares? I'll have windows where I don't replace four of them.
Probably a lot of people who do.
But, well, they have the, they'll all have aluminum-style frame that looks like aluminum from the inside, it functions differently.
Just wanted to make sure the board had all the information.
I don't know. All I know is Rockford, five hundred thousand dollars worth of windows. But we still have cutters that need to be fixed.
He can blame us. It was the board's decision, I felt the same, that you guys did.
No, you can't.
No, no, he can say that. He can say that.
Okay, now can we get to the next item? I would like to, a motion of that we request that the end guide is invest, put a, that one for, find three, put a, put a work order requiring every player replacement, ask that it's at least two to three competitive ones so we can get the work done.
Second. Any discussion?
Do we even need to do that? We have seen the votes.
Let's do it. Just do it if you can.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion.
Last item for my short agenda items. Our next Facilities Committee meeting will be held on May first, 2019, at six thirty at the Wadi Creek. I hope everyone can enjoy us for an interesting and fun evening touring the facilities and the outdoor playground.
Thank you, Mr. Brady.
Out as well.
Personal committee, Mr. Dupin.
I have nothing to report on personal.
Thank you, Mr. Dupin. Policy committee, nothing to report. Student functions committee, Mrs. Scott.
I guess I could say our committee is meeting on Monday.
Oh, it is.
What time, when, where?
P E room for a clock.
Yes.
P E room for a clock.
Our board members are waiting.
Absolutely.
Yes.
No, we don't need it, just ask.
It, it functions like any other board committee in that regard, so board members could come and play.
Any community member?
Anybody, yes. It's open to the.
I would just ask that maybe when Mrs. Natalie sends out the dates to remember, she could include that as one of those dates in the future because I don't know whether we're going to give an application to that. So, I do appreciate you bringing that up. Technology committee, or is there anyone here who's here to report on anything related to that?
You don't have anything, I have not heard anything.
It's your community education foundation, Mrs. Wilson.
Yes, I have a report from Amy Lecks. The E C F's annual teacher mini-grant application is open to all teacher, Exeter teachers until May first and today we've received two mini-grant applications. We hope that more teachers will apply for the opportunity to add and innovate new items or applications to their classrooms. In 2018, E C F awarded seven Exeter teachers nearly $2,700 in teacher mini-grants and separately from our golf tournament proceeds, awarded $650 in funds for portable Wi-Fi spots for Ripton students. Thank you to everyone for that participated in the foundation's first annual Beef and Drink fundraiser. Not only did we raise funds for E C F, but we also honor Don Kramer for his forty-three years of dedication to Exeter. And E I T C dollars raised to date are $11,500. The E C F has received two applications from the high school totaling roughly $15,000, one for an interactive whiteboard projector for Mr. Rob's classroom and one from Mr. Potter for STEM robotics raspberry pie kits, which will be used simultaneously at both the high school and the junior high school. And finally, E C F welcomed three new board members at the March meeting, rounding out the board at twenty-six members and the three new members are myself, Megan Stout Blue and Sam Padavani. So, they're excited, we're excited to welcome great Exeter supporters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Can I just mention one thing? She had mentioned Mr. Potter who oversees the STEM program. I happened to see him at the STEM fair and he reported to me that he was able to make a connection with people at Penn State University, Penn State Berks, with the invent Penn State program where students from our STEM program are using and learning on the 3D printers at Penn State St. Joe's campus in downtown Reading. And also that I was able to put in touch with the entrepreneurial program at Penn State Berks to look at early discussions as to how to possibly monetize the unit and create patents for the programs that are coming out of the STEM program as well. So, I'm really proud of him and making those contacts and following him on that. Thank you. Berks Career and Tech Center Operating Committee, Department of Planning.
Yes. We met last month on March twenty-seventh. They approved the 2019-2020 calendar distribution to the schools. I have this, I only have one, I'm going to pass this around, but it's only a copy. They have, they're taking applications for this theme camp, it's held at the West Campus week of the seventeenth. It's a really great opportunity for seventh and eighth graders. They can either get signed up, like, if there's a school counselor, they can also, they can, parents can go online and sign for, sign their son or daughter up, do the registration right online. It's at the East Camp, it's held at the West Campus, but they have transportation from the, if you go to the East Campus, they'll transport you to the West Campus. So, it's a really, really great opportunity. This will be the last time I talk about their golden anniversary. I know I've mentioned this, but it is coming up a week from this Saturday, April twenty-seventh, from eleven to thirty at the East Campus. If you have not got your raffle tickets, you can purchase them online. And just a reminder that that is a Corvette and a pickup truck that was restored beautifully by the students from those oil shops. So, I don't know if you got a chance to read that article that Jerry had sent to us on signing day, the school that we're going signing day? So, now, if you haven't, I guess that you take a look at that, but that, that was, was an article about how the schools, you know, everybody knows about that late sign-up colleges. So, they did sign up if a student had gone to the C T C programs and had a job with a company and he did, you know, the whole thing with, you know, the company would be there, he might have a company shirt or hat. This was in Virginia and did something similar at another school in another state. And it recognizes like the hard work and value of career and technical programs. And not to take anything away from students going to college because we still need students going to college and that's very important, but not, college is not for every student. And the C T Cs years ago had, in some people's minds, had reputation or perception, I should say, of being, "You go to C T C if you're not going to college." And so, kind of helps to get away from that because it's a, I sat next to a student at my lovely dinner and he was from Ole. First of all, he finished, Dr. Winters, he had finished all, he's a senior, finished all his coursework in the virtual program they had there. Right, so he's done with his coursework, he's in, was an HVAC program and was already had a job and I'm going to mention the person from the company that, where he was going to be working, but he was doing a co-op and guaranteed a job, making a nice amount of money when he finished. So, I, I don't, I like the idea of that and I'm asking if maybe if you haven't read the article, that you look at it and is, I think, is that something you might be able to do like next year or?
I can speak to Dr. Kraft.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in here at Exeter, like, I don't know.
Well, yeah, we speak to him about the C T C kids and then bring them here, the the articles.
Yeah, so just, you know, look at the article because I really like the idea of, you know, you know, honoring those students who work hard like that and most of them spent three years with their certification. So, one of the, I wanted to just mention, they honored and gave an award to a man named Mr. Ryan Ott. He's the owner of B and L Heating and Air Conditioning HVAC and this whole, this whole paper was full of all the things that he is doing, but just to summarize, he has created a scholarship for a student who passed away, he donated a lot of HVAC equipment, he employs a lot of the students like the one I mentioned from Ole and, you know, has co-op opportunities. What else? So, anyway, they, there's a lot of things where I won't read them or, you know, just donating money. Oh, he helps to also prepare the students for the N O P D, the test that they have to take to get their certification. So, I, he was honored to mention that we have, you know, people in the community that really help our students.
Dr. McFadden, several of us were at the P V SASS conference back in December and he was actually there. They had a, they had a panel full of, you know, people in different careers that, because the focus of the SASS conference this year was on career readiness and he actually spoke and I actually got a chance to go to his breakout session and he had a very non-traditional past in terms of his own education and, yeah, he's a really interesting guy.
Yeah, yeah. And I forgot to mention too, that if you attend the celebration celebration, they are going to be doing tours of the house, which is either, it's almost complete. Yeah, but I, I mean, it's, it's beautiful. I saw it before, you know, about the stages that now, but they're going to be doing tours of the, of the house. That's it.
I got to win.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Now, look, you don't get, you don't get your ticket and don't be mad, but Hunter drives up in the shiny pickup truck and I drive up in my Corvette. We got our tickets, huh?
It's going to be lit.
Yeah.
It's going to have lights?
No, it's going to be lit.
Nice.
All lit.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. B C I U wore your senior packet notes from the, what happened at the board meeting on March twenty-first, business as usual for the most part, nothing really extraordinary to report. The next meeting of the B C I U board will be on April twenty-fifth, at which time they'll be honoring their, their retiring CFO, Carl Blessing, who has been with the B C I U for, I believe, thirty-five years. Legislative liaison, Mr. Gollum.
There's some items that you can contact your legislators about. H B five twenty-six and S P thirty-four, saving millions of dollars for some school district that make tuition payments for their students to attend cyber charter schools that they never authorized. The bills will require parents to pay for the child's education at cyber charter school if the school district of residence offers its own full-time cyber education program. There's one. Another. Property tax reform, independent fiscal office estimated it would take about eight point five billion in tax revenue to provide Pennsylvania homeowners with a one-hundred percent school property tax, homestead exclusion, as has been proposed by lawmakers according to the I F O. Projection of F Y two thousand nineteen twenty net revenues is thirteen point seven billion. As a result, fully replacing lost revenue from elimination of homestead property taxes would require a P I T rate increase of one point nine percentage points. P E S's update in a press release on March eleventh, P A school employees' retirement system announced the fund's post-rate recession investment strategies are working in the current follow-up markets. P E S's achieved an eight percent return for the ten-year period that ended December thirty-one, two thousand eighteen, extending its long-term investment earnings target of seven point two five percent, five point seven five percent. Glad they're getting a return because I just got word that the teacher, the teachers union lost seven percent last year. Thank you, guys. House Bill seventy-eight-five Employee Rights Notification and Protection, House Labor and Industry Committee met on Monday, March eighteen. We consider H B seventy-eight-five, which responds to Janus' decision from two thousand eighteen, requiring employers to notify employers when they have not joined the union, that have not joined the union, new employees that they are not required to pay any compensation. Additionally, the bill repeals sections of current law that are in conflict with the Janus decision. And House Bill ninety-seven, nicotine products in school, property sale of vaping products to minors, would amend the criminal code, making an offense to sell nicotine products electronic nicotine delivery systems to minors and to minors who purchase or attempt to purchase nicotine products or electronic nicotine delivery systems. So, those are some things you can look at and report and contact your legislators.
Thank you, Mr. Gollum. Township burrow liaison, Mr. Dupin.
Yes, two things to update. I have been in fairly regular contact with Mr. B. Comey, who is the Exeter championship who is the Exeter Township representative, studio of the school board. He's quite occupied with some issues down at the township right now. But once again, I ask my colleagues on the board if you have issues or concerns. Hunter, I did ask him about the issue around the use of filings from Academy. He hasn't gotten back to me on that. I also was able to attend the St. Lawrence Borough Council meeting last, last week. And it was a good meeting, got to interact with the entire board at St. Lawrence. They generally seem to, seem like things are going okay. And then make contact with the board members, our council president, and to Jennifer Leinbach, who's the St. Lawrence Borough manager. They didn't have any outstanding issues with us at this point, except for maybe some trees on the air left and then they follow up on that.
Thanks, Mr. Dupin. Superintendent, super tennis report, Mr. Dr. Phillips.
Thank you, Dr. Hunter. Julie Rears and Olivia Bianconi have each had an artwork accepted as dual enrollment RAC, which is ready in area, ready area community college students to participate in the Higher Education Council of Perks County Conference. This is the annual Perks County undergraduate research and creativity conference held at RAC with other area colleges and universities on April 27th. They will be, are reporting to the Miller Center at 9:45, where their artwork will be displayed that day. The Technology Student Association team had a tremendous showing at the 2019 state competition held in Seven Springs. The children's stories team, consisting of Michelle Wang, Maya Sims, and Yoshika Kegitabu, made it to the finals. Our fashion design team, consisting of the same young ladies, and assisted by Carly Patton and Emily Holleran, took home a very impressive, impressive third place and had a show-stopping runway presentation. You can watch their performance by going to PATSA, clicking on opening ceremony, and fast forward to time 1302. Terry Goff is very precise. The Exeter PA robotics team, consisting of Luke Revelle, Kyle Krepper, and Kevin Kramer, and under the tutelage of Mr. Zach Potter, took home the state championship with a most dominating performance, dazzling the judges with their ingenuity and operating skills. The team is looking forward to having a better 2020 competitive season. Two other events took place last week. As we spoke about the Special Olympics, 200, over 260 students and over six districts participated at our stadium. It was a great day for the students, it was a great day for staff. There was a new event, a new event, a new item this year. The Penn State Perks, or Penn State Perks interns developed an Olympic village for the students, where they can participate and do beanbag toss, face painting, they made bracelets. That seemed to be the hottest topic of the whole event. But it was, it was a great event, great to see us doing that again. I guess it was away from us for a while. We are having it back. I offered it in perpetuity. If they want to be here, we'll, we'll offer our facilities. It's a great event and it's, it's nice that we participate the way we do. Some people were there, and I saw Mr. Gelof there. Again, just a tremendous event for our students as well as the students in the county. I did meet with the superintendents earlier that last week and invited all of them to come. Some of them do their own events, they have field day and so forth. But it seems like we're turning the tide a little bit, and some more may come to Special Olympics. And we've offered to do some type of superintendent event with the students, just to be involved. The other event that took place was on Thursday. A French contingent from the education ministry showed up. We had a formal partnership signing in the library. The director or in French rector, Marc Loyes, and a few of his people came out. It was a tremendous event for the school district. We do now have an exchange program with them. We're the first district in Pennsylvania that has that relationship. They visited the high school, took tours, interacted with our students. Couldn't be more gracious. At one event, or excuse me, in one classroom, one of our students who's going on to a very high-profile school, starts with a V, but she's in the business program, international business.
International.
Almost as good. And she's an international business student, and she mentioned that she may be looking for an internship overseas. He immediately took out her business card, wrote down his personal cellphone number to her and said, "Call me when you want to come over." He was that gracious with our students. Students loved it, having them in the classroom, having the interaction with this group from France. Some of our teachers, one teacher had him autograph her lesson plan since he was in the classroom. So it was a really, really good event, good for our students, good for our district, and it was just a great thing to be involved in. That is my report.
Thanks, Dr. Phillips.
Dr. Phillips, Mr. Brady and I were both at the signing ceremony. I agree with you, it was awesome. It was, it was great, am I right?
I enjoyed meeting the individuals from France. I also enjoyed talking with several of our students, none of our seniors that were very excited about the fact that others would have it, unfortunately would. And also I bet one young lady, I couldn't catch her name, which was talking about her future plans and, you know, like, just felt like we really prepared our students well for the next step. Just a nice young lady who really, I thought she was like an example of what you want to walk out of the door. So good job for all of the.
Absolutely. Staff, Becky Lafferty gets a lot of credit for that. She put a lot of that, she was the one that made the connections, because we've been going over to France with a group of our kids for a couple of days. They've been coming over here for a couple of days. The one gentleman, Simone, is one of the teachers, top-notch people. This takes it a bigger step, where students can actually spend a semester over there. They want to know how our kids are going to be educated while they're over there. That's where our virtual program will be a place. They'll be taking the same classes virtually as they would if they were sitting in our classrooms. So that's another plus to our virtual program. The other piece to it is, as I was leaving, one of our Spanish teachers, who is working on a partnership, that short partnership, a couple of days with school in Spain, now wants to have a partnership for an expanded exchange program. So we already have a model, so we'll be doing that as well as the German program. So it's really been a great experience, I think, for us.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Dr. Henry, we're gonna need an interruption.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's okay. Is there any, are there any board members who would like to be heard at this time? Mr. Henry.
I forgot something for athletics committee. The athletics committee will have a meeting on Thursday, May 2nd, at the senior high school conference room. We will be discussing a proposed increase to the athletics fee and to the fiscal fees, as well as any other items that may be on the agenda. You will receive notice of what the agenda is beforehand. The time, 6:30, sorry. You're welcome. Thank you for your time, Jim.
Are any other board members who would like to be heard at this time?
I would like to know if we could have a brief executive session to review the request that was made this evening from the family.
I actually wanted to comment about that as well, in front of everyone. So if you want to talk about that first.
Do you would like to?
I was going to comment about that.
Comment. If you'd like to make a comment, make a comment.
Actually, I have two things to say. The first one was, I just wanted to say that also May 8th is going to be held on the Exeter High School campus on May 10th and 11th. I'm a campaign manager that really needs nothing, other than I can throw highlights up in space. They're doing, there's five different charities. It's ECF, Exeter Blue Cantry Teachers in the Parks, which my children donated money to, the Exeter Canines, and then also the Exeter Library. You can choose which we'd like to donate to, so I wanted to throw that out there as well. In regards to Elijah. I work at West Popco Bell Elementary School. And every day, I'm, I'm gonna get emotional, like you know. Every day I walk past a poster. And every day I look at this poster and I think to myself, that poster is so true. So I'm gonna describe it to you. It is three crates on the floor, and they are, say, 15 inches, or should, let me take that back. Cool, okay. So they're 15 inches, 18 inches, and say 20 inches. And there's children of different heights standing atop of these crates. But you don't see that view, you see the other view. And what you see is a wall, and you see all their heads being able to look over that wall. The point of it is, if those crates weren't there, one of those kids would be able to look over that wall and the other one, the other two wouldn't be able to. And the saying on it is, it says, "Fair isn't everyone getting the same thing. It's everyone getting what they need to succeed." I waited until this moment to talk, because I don't want to be, I don't want to have an emotional response to this. I wanted to try and be fair. I know we have a policy and I know we have to stick to that. However, I firmly believe in my heart that the reason I'm on this board is for the, for children. And I, I believe that it is in the best interest of Elijah to be able to finish off the year here. I may hold on to this as Hawaii, and if we have an executive session, I'll be happy to share that. But I want you to know that I support you and I support Elijah. I don't want every parent coming to me asking me to make this exception. I think this is a very special circumstance for a very special child. Yeah, and I hope we can help you, and if we can, I wish you the best of luck.
Are there any other comments your board members have at this time?
We had, Dr. Ember, we had a business functions committee meeting last week. Hunter and I were the only two who could attend, partially because I sent up the notes, so we can get into their schedule. But in the meeting, Anne did ask the board for guidance as to how to close the gap that we have in the budget. So what kind of guidance do we want to give?
I apologize. I think, based on what Anne has done in the past practice, and if I'm missing anything here, let me know, correct me if I'm wrong. But what I think we should do is direct Anne to assemble a list of deficit reduction items. I, I think that in amounting to a total amount, unless she has an objection to this, would be $3.5 million. From that list, the board would formulate an opinion about any of those items that we would pursue. It would be the board's responsibility to look through that list and choose them. But I would hope that the administration would also maybe put some narrative aside, whether it comes from Dr. Phillips, Dr. Winters, Anne, or any of the other administrators, to what the ramifications of that decision would be. But I think that this is something that we should pursue in order to close our deficit, because at this time, I think we have nearly a $1 million structural deficit in the current proposed budget. If we include a maximum tax increase tonight, to me, I think we can, we can work to see if we can reduce that at all. And I think we should work to reduce that.
Mr. Goff, are we planning on having a business function meeting anytime soon, where just maybe the board members could attend and have, if you're really dedicating conversation to it?
Anne, do you have it quicker than May?
May night.
May night.
Yes, May night.
Okay, so May night would be a date that we should maybe try to encourage as many board members as possible to try to attend to really get into the weeds. Does that make sense?
Is it too late?
No, I mean, I can compile things, but, you know, I think the goal on controlling the structural deficit is going to be more of a longer term, it's just not going to be one year. We've talked about rolling going down, and there has to be a clear plan going ahead. How are we gonna adjust our staff? How are we gonna adjust the schedule to adjust the staff at the secondary level? There's really not a lot of things outside of payroll and benefits of the controlling contracts going forward. But, you know, I'll make lists, you know, 3.5 million is a lot. And a lot of that would be arbitrary and almost kind of silly. It would be things like, you know, doing away with full-day kindergarten. When I know we've done that so long, it's probably never gonna happen.
That is not a recommendation, I'm aware.
Right.
It's in the newspaper, so I'm not.
Right, no. So I, I don't know that I'd be able to come up with that amount other than recommending program and staffing cuts. So I will go through things that, you know, it was from eight years ago, where we, you know, did several things. I'm glad to hear that the EAF fee, the extra regular fee, is gonna be pretty valuable. I was gonna mention that, probably should go up. But those are small dollars, but again, I will summarize, because we talked about priority two coming off, staff, those staff costs, debt service, and the, according to our VGRM, so we've got down to about $400,000 of already up the gate. So I'll do my best, but I don't think coming up with 3.5 million in one year is realistic. I think over, you know, a period of years, we have to look at that number as relates to staff. Does that make sense?
Yes, and that is, I'm satisfied with that answer. And for Jerry and I, and whoever the business functions committee would be going forward, I think we need to pursue that with you and support you in pursuing that long-term objective of reducing our structural deficit. And I, I think that we should look soberly at some of those decisions, because likely some of those decisions are not, are not painless. And I think we need to be aware of both ramifications and also the long-term cost of not having a balanced budget too. So thank you, Anne, I, yes.
What time is your meeting?
Well, sorry.
Six.
6:30 is a good time.
Six o'clock.
6:30 is a good time.
Six o'clock is a good time.
6:30 is a good time for most people to start a meeting.
Well, I mean, again, I'm gonna come back to, you guys are gonna have to bear with me, but I, while I do see value in ferreting out the expenses as a way to improve the efficiency of the organization, which I'm totally supportive of. In business world, real success comes from not just managing expenses, but from finding new sources of revenue. I'm gonna go back to that, new sources of revenue, because we never talk about that. We only talk about the millage rate as a way to generate revenue in the district. And so while we've never done something before, it doesn't mean that we can't, that we can't do it. It's, we sit here, we look at the budget, we lament the things we can't do because of the limitations, and the conversation's always the same. So we have to, we have to shake the paradigm. It's no, it's daunting for us to think that we can't possibly do this, because only private companies or entrepreneurs can do such things. But we've not created a culture here that surfaces these kinds of, this kind of thinking, encourages this kind of thinking, invest in this kind of thinking. And I think we just have to take a step back. I'd like to challenge the board that while it gives a mandate to cut costs, it also takes the same zeal to empower our district and our employees to do something innovative, to develop community partnerships, to align with local incubators, to leverage STEM concepts and the marketable products, use the intellectual capital developed in the classroom, the energy of the students to find new ways to look at problems and come up with new ways of tackling the issues, and yes, of raising revenue. There's amazing energy within our district from our teachers and support staff in our community and even our students. And this board can do more to marry the school and the community in shared initiatives to tackle some of our most challenging problems. We all have to be invested, because we are all vested in the outcome. We can wish the property taxes weren't our primary source of revenue, but the fact of the matter is, is that no matter how much we wish that, it will take state action to remove the primary burden from property owners, which I would totally, totally support. We can wish that we don't have to pay for capital projects to provide safe, secure, and functioning facilities, but we have to. If we want to remain competitive and ensure that our reputation for providing a quality education remains strong. Public schools are foundational to the identity of any community and provide real measurable value. Nothing will damage the value of your property investment in Exeter than a school system that loses its reputation and quality. We cannot look at the budget as just a collection of numbers. It really is an expression of our values and our aspirations of the things that we believe we need to support to ensure that all of our children achieve their potential. Now, we can all sit here and say that this seems impossible, but anything is only impossible until somebody does it. To the timid and hesitating, everything seems impossible. And in conjunction with cost-cutting measures, we have to look for ways to generate funds so that we can be the architects of our future and not the hand-wringers that do the same old things and get the same old results. So we must challenge ourselves to look at where we can generate revenue, while at the same time, we're looking to manage our costs.
Any other comments?
We have a minute for session.
Other comments?
Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Just a second. We will be having a short executive session following this meeting for personal matters. I'll accept the motion for adjournment.
So move.
Quick clarification, are we going to retire the executive session? Be adjourned.